Title 13, Refuse Collection Code. I am Councilmember Emmanuel Remy, Chair of the Environment Committee. I want to remind everyone that this hearing is currently live on YouTube and Facebook, and is also live and being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, Columbus's Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. I want to recognize and thank my other council colleagues that are here this afternoon, specifically Council President Shannon Hardin. Thank you for joining us today. I also want to thank and welcome our presenters this afternoon. Tim Swager, the Administrator of the Department of Public Service, Division of Refuge. We also have Randy Borntrager, the Assistant Director of the Department of Public Service, who will be available for questions. For quite some time, we have heard from residents, area commissioners, business owners, and sometimes other elected officials about litter and debris, illegal dumping, improper setouts, refuse containers and bulk items left in the public right-of-way for extended periods of time, overflowing refuse containers in our alleys, and the list goes on. Today, we are excited to learn more about and share some of the tools the City of Columbus is putting in its toolbox to address some of these challenges. During this hearing, we will discuss creating additional opportunities for solid waste in the legal dumping enforcement, strengthening enforcement for abandoned property, setouts and dumping in the right-of-way, augmenting requirements for construction waste. The purpose of this hearing is to engage the residents of Columbus, my council colleagues, and the Columbus Division of Refuge. Without further ado, I would like to turn the floor over to the Division of Refuge Administrator, Tim Swager, to begin our presentation. Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. I appreciate it. Thank you, Council President Hardin. Chapter 13, as a council member mentioned, we've been working on it for a while. The Mayor's Illegal Dumping Initiative, and then Councilmember Remy held some litter summits a year or two ago, and we've been working with the community trying to develop what exactly is it that we need to better combat what we're seeing out there. And going through Chapter 13, Title 13, I'd like to just start at the beginning, go through and kind of highlight the areas that we're going to change, proposing to be changed, and how those will benefit the residents of Columbus. Starting off with the Title 13 changes here, the first one is the abandoned property. We defined what abandoned property means. It's an item including but not limited to personal property left by a previous owner, property manager, tenant, or occupant. We added this definition to address move-outs and setouts. It's later used in the code. You'll see how that is effective for us to deal with that issue. That's one of the large issues that we've heard as we went around and talked to residents that the move-out, set-out was causing a lot of debris to be left out in the roadway and right-of-way and out for long periods of time. The next one is 130103. The agent in charge is a person or entity responsible for the development and maintenance of a new or existing multiple dwelling unit or multiple dwelling development. This was added to the definition for multi-dwelling to assign responsibility to the property owner or a manager for the tenants, because in those areas where we have multifamily dwellings, the residents, it's hard for us to identify who does it. So this allows us to hold the property owners and managers responsible for their waste stream. Continuing down, the collection containers. Everything else in between was in the old code, just to highlight that, so there were no changes. So we're not proposing changes, so we're just going to highlight the areas that we're proposing the changes. So going down to collection containers. Collection containers are refuse and recycling containers designated by a city that are made available to or purchased by residents of the city which meet the standards for size, strength, durability. We just added that definition to make sure everyone knew when we refer later on to what a collection container actually is. Continuing down to the improper use of containers. The improper use of containers, we define, occurs when a person fails to use a collection container for its intended purpose. We added this definition to address the illegal dumping into a city-issued container with improper material or unauthorized use. So the improper use of a container means, yeah, we have a 300-gallon container in the alley or a dumpster, and you're putting stuff into it, so you're not littering, but you're improperly using it because you're putting stuff that's prohibited into it. So we use that later on, so we can enforce the improper use of that container. Continuing on to the 1301.27, the notice of violation. This notice of violation means a written notice served to the owner advising that a code violation exists. Added this definition for use of enforcement. This is the actual enforcement side that we're proposing in Title 13 that would allow the Division of Refuge solid waste investigators to issue notice of violations. Continuing on to the next page, 1301.30, opting out of city service. Opting out, we defined it, means that an agent in charge chooses to decline city refuse collection services, including but not limited to residential household waste, recycling, yard waste, and bulk. Single-family dwelling units are not eligible to opt out. Currently, under our code, multifamily, if they don't want to meet our development standards for number of containers spacing, because we provide once-a-week service, they can opt out. What wasn't clear in the old code was that when you opt out for refuse services, you're opting out for the other services as well, waste, recycling, yard waste, bulk, those types of things. You can't opt out for waste, but still expect bulk service at those. So when you opt out, you're opt outing of all of it. So we added that definition to clarify what opting out meant. The next two are just pedestrian recycling receptacles and pedestrian waste receptacles. We define what those are. Those are sidewalk litter receptacles, we often refer to them as. We added that definition to address improper use. The real improper use of those that would come out is if a business has one out in front of them, it's not designed for that business to dump their waste into. These are for pedestrians walking down a street to throw their garbage, to throw their recycling into. They're not designed for residential use or business use. So we define what those were. That way, as we do enforcement, we can enforce who's permitted to use those. 1301.47, rules and regulation. Division of Refuge collection rules and regs are added operating guidelines not defined in Title 13 for residents, property owners, developers, and agents in charge. We added definition to clarify and inform where to find other guidance. So we're just saying that there are rules and regs that aren't included within Title 13. They've always been there. We're just referring to it in Title 13, so everyone knows that the rules and regs do exist, and that way they can reference those. 1301.51, unauthorized use of containers. This is the definition to address the illegal dumping. Occurs when a person uses a container that is not assigned to their residence. So we define who can use a 90-gallon, who can use a 300-gallon. So if someone comes over into an alley and they live five, six blocks away, they can't come drive over to your neighborhood and use the 300 in your alley because they're an unauthorized user of that container, because they don't reside against that alley to use it. So that was put in there to address the illegal dumping that occurs in these where people drive two, three, four blocks over to dump into the 300-gallons containers often, or dumpsters and even 90-gallon containers that residents haven't pulled back yet into their private property. Yard waste container, we just added the definition to talk about what that is. It's metal or plastic containers or paper lawn and leaf bags that are clearly labeled for yard waste. Those are collected through our contractor. We just defined what a yard waste container was, because it was not in our previous code. Continuing down to 1303.011, talk about the purpose. All provisions of Title 13 are enforceable by any law enforcement officer or law enforcement agency. We added that in there because we wanted to make sure that Franklin County Sheriff can enforce this, that the Columbus Police Officers can enforce this, any law enforcement agency can enforce this. It wasn't in our old code, which limited who had the legal right to enforce it. Adding this to this provision allows us to, that any law enforcement agency can enforce it in addition to our solid waste investigators. Continuing down to the general duty, is we define the 300-gallon containers shall only be repositioned or relocated by Division of Refuge collection personnel. We made this a general duty for containment because clarified who's responsible for when. So we have a lot of locations where residents were moving a 300-gallon container or multiple of them behind their house because they wanted extra capacity, because they're running an unauthorized business or a scrapping industry, and they wanted extra capacity, so they're moving them down there. This prohibits them from doing that, that you can't move a 300-gallon container, only the Division of Refuge collection has the right to reposition or relocate those. That was done to eliminate the misuse as well. Continuing down to container placement. This is in the old code, it was how far apart your collection container shall be placed at the point of collection designated by the Division of Refuge collection, and shall be placed, we have changed it to at least four feet from any parked vehicle or other obstruction. It used to be 10 feet. As we've gone to more front service, and we've really looked at this in these areas to make front service more viable, we took a truck out, opened up the arm on it, and determined that we needed four feet on each side of the can, that 10 feet was excessive. While it's nice, it just makes front collection very hard for residents to comply with if we want 10 feet from every parked vehicle out there. So we reduced that to four feet on each side to encourage our ability to add as much front collection as we can, but also without impacting our collection process. The storage of containers. This collection containers, other than 300-gallon containers and dumpsters and compactors, because they obviously stay out in the right-of-way, these are your 90-gallon and your 60-gallon trash and recycling containers. All shall be removed from the point of collection, which is the public right-of-way, by 2:00 p.m. on the day following the scheduled collection day, and stored until 6:00 p.m. on the day prior to the next scheduled collection day. Our old city, our current Title 13, rather, reads that it shall be 12 hours prior to a set time to be enforceable and removed by a set time the next day instead of 24 hours. In other words, our old code said you could set it out 12 hours prior to collection and had to be removed 24 hours after collection. Well, we collect people's trash at different times throughout the day. So it was always hard to enforce, because do we get there at 7:00, 7:30, 8:00? So we just simply moved it to a set time, so that way everyone knows that your container can be set out 6:00 p.m. the day prior, and you have to get it by 2:00 p.m. the day after we collect. So that's, it didn't change the intent of the old Title 13, it just said it made it more enforceable, because now we have a set timeframe that you can put your container out and collect it by. Continuing down, the general duty containment, storage of unacceptable waste. This is addressing the construction, remodeling, and demolition materials. It shall be the duty of the owner to provide for the proper storage, collection, and disposal by an authorized licensed waste hauler for any construction, remodeling, and demolition waste as defined in 1301.11, generated at or incident to any construction, remodeling, or demolition process. In addition, said owner shall provide storage capacity which is sufficient to contain the construction, remodeling, and demolition waste between disposal services, and shall keep such storage capacity for the duration of the project. That's a new section to address the rehab and construction debris that we've seen throughout areas of the city that's been being dumped illegally into the 300 containers or simply dumped into alleys. So this allows us an enforcement mechanism that requires, when they're doing construction, remodeling, and demolition, that they have to get a dumpster, they have to have a licensed hauler, that it's not on the city to dispose of that. That's the cost of a business. It's not something that residents should have to take over. So that's a new section, and that was something that was greatly asked for through the residential litter summits that we had. That was one of the areas that residents spoke loudly about. Continuing down to the general duty for bulk collection, we changed a lot of this to clarify it. Bulk collection shall not be placed out more than three calendar days, 72 hours, prior to the scheduled collection. I mentioned this, Councilmember Remy. This is one of those areas we had a lot of debate and discussion about bulk. You can set your trash can out 6:00 p.m. the night before. Bulk, as the old code read, could not be placed out until it was scheduled. Well, often it's one or two weeks before we go pick it up. We didn't want bulk sitting out there for two weeks until we, once you scheduled it, you couldn't put it out and let it sit for two weeks, because what we've seen is it gets torn apart, people add stuff to it, it really adds to the blight of a neighborhood. But we also felt 6:00 p.m. the night before was very restrictive to somebody. If you don't have somebody that can physically help you take out a couch the night before bulk is scheduled. So we tried to find a more common ground there, and we came up with the three calendar days, 72 hours, to limit how long it was sat out there, but also being reasonable for somebody that would need help moving a couch or a chair or a table, something large out that maybe lives alone or doesn't have somebody able-bodied to move that out. So we added the timeline to address that item for being placed out for the weeks. We reduced it to three days, and that's after it's being scheduled, and you'll get your scheduling date. The next thing we changed here is bulk shall only be scheduled at an occupied dwelling. This means if it's a vacant house, you can't schedule bulk at vacant houses, because they shouldn't be generating things. This is to handle some of those issues that we can address. Only bulk items generated on the property shall be scheduled for pickup. This was added, and again, several of our residents have talked about this. So people that run scrapping businesses or things like that, those are not bulk items generated on the property. So you can't schedule bulk pickup for those. If you're running a business, it's your responsibility to have a private hauler haul that stuff away. Bulk generated on the property, you bought a new couch, you bought a table, you bought a chair, that's what bulk is designed for. You know, you bought a new appliance that we accept. So those things are what bulk is designed for. It's not designed for going out and scrapping and bringing everything home and scheduling bulk every single week. So that's where we address the only bulk items generated on the property shall be allowed to be scheduled for pickup. The owner shall be responsible for the proper disposal of any abandoned property as defined in 130101. Abandoned property shall not be placed at a curb, alley, or in the public right-of-way collection without the director's express permission. This addresses the setouts and move-outs, because abandoned property, as we defined earlier, is prohibited. So if you, if someone gets evicted, or you start the eviction process and then you stop it, and they leave everything in the house, they cannot take everything out of that house, call us, put it at the curb, and expect to be picked up under bulk. So it's really to address that. Or in some large cases, we've had properties that have been abandoned that someone purchases through an auction or other manner, and the house is entirely full of items. That's something that they have to hire, they would have to hire somebody to come and clean that and have a dumpster there and haul that away through a licensed hauler. The next is if for any reason a notice of violation has been issued on a property, scheduled bulk collection shall not be permitted until the violation has been resolved unless otherwise approved by a solid waste investigator. The owner shall utilize a licensed private hauler and provide documentation of proper disposal. This is to ensure compliance and proper disposal. We added that, that essentially if you've been cited by us or code for violations, you have to come into compliance with those violations before you're allowed to schedule bulk collection by the City of Columbus. Continuing down to the general duty to remove and dispose of items after an eviction. It shall be the duty of an owner or leasor of a dwelling unit where a court-supervised set-out is performed as a result of any eviction action, to arrange for the collection and disposal through an authorized licensed commercial waste hauler. Acceptable or unacceptable waste resulting from any court-supervised set-out as a result of any eviction action shall not be placed in the public right-of-way. This is a new section to address the responsibility to the owner and to prohibit it from placing it in the right-of-way. So you evict them when you can't put everything at the curb, call us and ask us to come pick it up as bulk. So this is to address the eviction process in that manner. The general duty for multiple dwelling developments. This is all dumpsters, compactors, and bulk enclosures must be located within the multiple dwelling development. This is just saying, we added to clarify that they cannot be on a separate property. You can't have a development and own a piece of property nearby that you put all your stuff on and we collect, because we've had a lot of abuses and problems where those tenants then start using neighboring properties and fill up their enclosures before they bother to go up to wherever this separate piece of property may be. So we added that to clarify that it has to be on the same property as the dwelling development. Continuing down, this is where the powers of the Director of Public Service. We list, defined for the authority, the Director shall have but not limited to the authority to determine the following. It's defining acceptable and unacceptable waste, authorizing acceptable waste stream, defining recyclable materials, defining yard waste, frequency of collection, type of collection container, method of point of collection, multifamily specification requirements, safety, hours of collection, suspension of service. We go through these. Most of these were in the current code. What we did is the existing published nuisance. 16 is new, because we established penalties and fees for a specific purpose. Assessment of civil fines is new. Notice of violation in enforcement is a new authority. And then we added the Institute Pilot Projects Regarding the Waste Stream. So those were the, most of those were in there, but we added quite a few in there, and it's for the enforcement side of Title 13 code. Prohibited activities. This is expanded to include the proposed changes in enforcement. This is a section that lists the most of the changes. So as we go through this section here, the bulk, as we defined it earlier, what you can do, this is the section that lets us write the citation if you don't do it. So what you heard earlier is just really repeated here, and this is where we would cite you under this code as a violation, because it's a prohibited activity. So no person shall place bulk out more than 72 hours prior. If you do, then it's a violation of the code, and we can write you a citation. So all of these next ones shall fail to maintain bulk that has been placed out for scheduled collection. No person shall schedule bulk at an unoccupied dwelling. No person shall place or cause to be placed personal property abandoned by a tenant. No person shall schedule bulk collection at a property that is the subject of an unresolved notice or violation. No person shall knowingly schedule or cause to be scheduled bulk items for collection that were not generated on the property. All the stuff we talked about earlier, this is just where we would write the citation for it under this section of the code. Same thing with the next section, the containment and storage. That goes into no person shall move a 300-gallon container. If you do, then you can write a citation. The bagging up, no person shall fail to place acceptable common household waste other than bulk recyclables or yard waste into plastic or paper bags before placing it in the designated collection. This is the requirement that you bag your trash before you put it in a container. That was already in Title 13. This just gives us the authority to enforce that. Continuing to item F there, the storage of containers. We talked about setting a timeframe that gives us the authority for 6:00 p.m. the day before to 2:00 p.m. the day after. The evictions, no residential unit premises in the city where supervised set-out is performed, again, gives us the authority under evictions that they can't do those prohibited activities, and if they do, we would write them up under this section of the code, 1305.05A or B. The illegal dumping disposal of acceptable and unacceptable waste, that's illegal use of containers. No person shall engage in illegal use of containers. No person shall engage in improper use of containers. That gives us the authority to enforce, again, improper use of the containers, which is one of our bigger areas that we struggled with, because if someone threw trash into a can, we had, under our old code, even if they were coming from another city and doing it, we didn't have a good way to write them up, because they were putting trash into a receptacle. Now we can do something about that, because it's an unauthorized use of a container. So that's how we're addressing that. Any person violating this section shall be in violation of this title and shall be penalized according to the Chapter 1313, which we add the fines later. We'll show you those. Unauthorized use of containers, again, no owner shall fail to provide for the proper storage, collection, and disposal by an authorized licensed waste hauler. That's in there for the, that's item J. That's in there for the construction debris that we heard about. This is where we would cite them under that, if they're throwing construction debris into the containers or into the public right-of-way and not having a licensed hauler haul it away. That's where we would cite them under that section, 1305.06J. Continuing down to 1305.10, place of business. No owner, agent, or leasing, or person in charge of any place of business shall fail to arrange for the proper storage of all waste generated by the particular place of business and for the timely collection and disposal of said waste by an authorized licensed waste hauler as required by this title. We added that for enforcement. In other words, if you own a business, you're required to have refuse service for that business. You cannot utilize the City of Columbus if you have a place of business. You have to have your own private service. We do not service businesses. Yard waste on 1305.14C, no person shall place yard waste out for collection. So we define when yard waste, 6:00 p.m. the day prior to 2:00 p.m. the day after, and no entity providing yard waste cutting and/or pruning services on public or private property shall fail to remove and dispose of said yard waste as specified. So if a utility company's coming through trimming their trees in the alley, they cannot just leave those branches. They have to take them with them. If a professional landscaping company maintains properties, they cannot dump those into the city right-of-way and expect us to come get them. If you hire a business or a company to perform those services, it's upon them to remove and dispose of that yard waste in a legal manner. 1307 enforcement. We added the 1307.3, the civil penalties. This is where we get into the actual code, where in Section 5, notices of violation may include the assessment of a civil penalty as provided for in Section 1307.03. So this allows us to write the citations under 0.03. This is an entire new section. These are all the violations. It's everything we just talked about prior, about setting your containers out bulk, all of those. So these are the subsections that the civil penalties refer to, relating to the obstruction of passaging of city waste vehicles, multiple dwelling development requirements relating to place of business, the push carts scavengings addressed, unacceptable waste, yard waste, general duty for noncompliance. So we hit all of those different areas, and then we assess a proposed fine amount for each of those infractions. Any person who violates any of the foregoing prohibitions has committed an infraction for which liability is imposed by subsection 130703B upon the owner. Liability imposed, each owner of a parcel at which an infraction has occurred is liable to the city in the amounts established in subsections 130703F and G. Noncriminal offense, there is no conviction. The infractions established by this section are noncriminal. The imposition of liability upon the owner under this section shall not be deemed a conviction for any purpose. These are civil actions. Other costs and penalties are not aggregated, though. Nothing in this section shall be construed as altering or limiting the effects of any other section of city codes, the criminal penalties imposed by any other section, or the ability of law enforcement officers to enforce those sections. So while we can now issue these civil violations, we can still do criminal charges in the cases where we have the evidence and the violation meets the criminal code. So we're not dismissing going through the court system when we can, but this allows us a venue to handle some of those other issues that arise that are noncriminal at this point. So the notice of violation section below that, these are the penalties established. As you go through these penalties, they range from $100 up to $1,000, depending on the severity of it. Most of them are in the $250 to $500 range, so if you're improperly using or caught illegally dumping, that's going to be $500. Burning trash is going to be $1,000 fine. So the higher the infraction, obviously the greater the offense, but the lower ones, we have one in here for $100, that's 1305.11 and 0.12. Those are the containers. So that's leaving your container out. So those are the lower infraction amounts. So the infraction amounts were based on the level of severity and the amount of problems that it's causing our residents. So the fines established by this subsection are imposed upon the owner, both as civil penalties and to reimburse the city for a portion of the costs incurred by it in the enforcement of the infraction, or for some infraction, the increased cost of solid waste disposal. So that's how they were based. We added a section of late penalties for $20 for 20 days and $40 for 40 days, and that's pretty standard on those throughout the city for penalties and violations. And then, collection, the costs imposed by this section may be enforced and collected by means of a civil action or any other means provided for in these city codes or the Ohio Revised Code. So that allows for us to collect upon those. Continuing on down, any notice of violation on page 20 there. Notice of violation appeals, if they want to, they appeal the violation, it goes to the Property Maintenance Appeals Board, which is already set up under code enforcement. They would be the one that would hear these. Noncompliance penalty is the last item. If you do not comply, unless otherwise provided in the ORC, which whoever violates any section of this refuse collection code may be deemed guilty of a third-degree misdemeanor and fined not more than $1,000. That was increased from $500. And imprisoned for not more than 60 days and shall be responsible for court costs. So that's the criminal side code. If we're going after those, it's up to $1,000 fine and up to 60 days in jail. So we increased that from 500 to 1,000 on those. That is the changes that are proposed in Title 13. As you've seen, they're really geared around getting a handle on the illegal dumping and the littering that's occurred throughout areas of the city, and we've really focused in, from what we've heard from the residents, on how we need to go after and address these areas and civil violations and the right to, and the ability for the solid waste investigators to issue those is the mechanism that we're proposing. And that's all I have, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Director, or Administrator, excuse me. The fees that you proposed, how did you come up with those fees?
Yeah, so we reviewed cities around the United States that are like cities, and we took their penalties and clauses, and we looked at those, and we discussed it as a group, and we kind of went- And we kind of went on those and, and used those as our standards. So we wanted also be reasonable, you know, infractions, uh, that are, uh, more, more costly to us had higher fines, less costly to the citizens, meaning, you know, we don't have to clean up after. So leaving your container out, you know, we didn't want to make it ridiculously, uh, expensive, but it also needs to be high enough to be a deterrent. Uh, so that's where we did those, those things. But it's mainly done by, uh, researching other like cities and, and utilizing what they were, uh, finding in those ones.
Thank you. What do you, what, uh, could you, uh, review again what an improper set out is?
Sure, so an improper set out, there's a couple of different, uh, things for, uh, set outs. So sometimes in the eviction process, what, what has occurred or does occur in the city is someone starts an eviction in the court system. The tenant then moves out because they either don't want an eviction on their record or they don't, uh, go through the process, so therefore they move out. So now the property owner pulls the eviction order. And now they have all that furniture that got left, but they didn't go through the eviction process. So our current Title 13 only dealt with evictions. And it didn't deal with set outs when people just take everything and set it out because the tenant has left for any number of reasons. So that furniture and the whole house was being set out at the curb. And they were calling that person saying, oh, well, your stuff's at the curb, come get it. Well, then it's causing a problem for code because they don't let it, you know, it couldn't be on private property. So they move it to the right of way. Now it's sitting out in front of a house and it's a, it's really problematic for that neighborhood. It becomes trash pile and it gets added on to and added on to. So we wanted to, uh, clarify that that is not permissible. You cannot take all that furniture and set it out. It's not going to meet the code. It's not anything that we're going to collect. That's the cost of doing business in those situations where you need to either store it.
For instance, would quietly have that out on the curb and, and not do anything with it, call bulk for.
That's one mechanism. Two, if you put it out more than seventy-two hours in advance. Three, if it's not acceptable bulk. And four, if it's not a set, if it's a set out and you didn't go through the process. So we have multiple avenues that we can address that. So this, a lot of what we've proposed is to deal with that exact issue. Because we did hear that loudly from residents that that was problematic in their neighborhoods. So we've given ourselves several different avenues to go that we can enforce that.
Great. How does the city define public right of way as it relates to refuse and refuse collection?
Sure, the public right of way is what is by legal definition in the public right of way, which is the, the property, uh, that the city owns and maintains. So normally in an alleyway, it's, it's about where the utility lines or the garages are back there. In the front of the house, it's normally, it's not always, but it's back a sidewalk if you have sidewalks in those neighborhoods. So it's, it's defined, it, there's a legal definition as to what the right of way line is. So every street is a little bit different. But, uh, we can look at it on a street by street and address by address basis when necessary. But generally speaking, the roadway into the back of curb is the public right of way, which they have access and free use of. Even if you maintain that property in between the sidewalk and the roadway, that is public right of way. So that is where you're prohibited from putting stuff, you know, under this code. And in the rear of these houses, it's typically from the, almost where the garage ends into the alleyway. Usually it's the center line of the alleyway plus a couple of feet. But as most of our alleys in the city are pretty tight, the, the garages aren't built very far off of the right of way line. So it's each roadway is a little bit different, but generally speaking, that's what the right of way is.
Can we, um, can, I'll, I'll have you speak to this just a little bit because I think, um, it's not widely known. But, but you, you're supposed to take your trash and your recycling bin back from that right of way, especially those in alleys, you know, think of places like Clintonville, et cetera. Uh, you are supposed to pull that back within your property and not leave the sit there if they're ninety gallon or the recycling bin, is that correct?
Yes, council member, that's currently in our code. And, and we do have areas of town that that's not, uh, followed very, you know, uh, often. But yeah, you're supposed to put your container out on the night before collection. We collect it and then within twenty-four hours bring it back onto your private property. It is a, we've, we've really looked at this. It is a great reduction in illegal dumping in alleys and litter when we remove those containers. Because when people are looking for places to dump, if you have your container sitting in the right of way, that's inviting people to be able to dump into those containers. So when, when residents move them back onto their property, there's less illegal dumping going on because there's not the capacity to drop them into those containers.
Do, can you talk a little bit? I'm going to just use this opportunity to talk about some issues that we know are, are real problems. But when somebody puts out their, say their recycling happens to fall on the same day as, as their trash and they put those, uh, bins side by side with no room distance, what, what do you recommend? Uh, so that your operators can get easy access to dump the trash container, for instance?
Yeah, I appreciate that. That is one-fifth of the city due to the rotating holidays, uh, schedule. One-fifth of the city is always going to have, uh, recycling and, uh, refuse collection on the same day. So if you're pushing out both of those containers, we ask that you get, we'd like four feet in between those containers. That's because we're fully automated. And when the arm comes out, if you've got them too close together, we cannot grab that container. Or if we do, we'll knock one of them over. And the same with Rumkey, who's our contractor collecting the recycling. They're, they're, they're generally largely, uh, fully automated now on the recycling side as well. They have the same issue. So when residents push those two containers out, we ask that they're, they be separated. We want to see four feet in between those containers. That way we're not damaging them or knocking them over.
That makes sense. Can we commit to evaluating, um, these, the impact on litter that these propose, these changes that we are going to pass, uh, in six months or twelve months so that we can see how well, well, our changes have done in combating illegal litter?
Yeah, we're committed to that, uh, council member. Actually, this week and next week, we're litter indexing the entire city. So our drivers are scoring every road in the city so that we'll have a baseline of where we're at. And then we're going to repeat that every July. So that way we can study and where is litter going? What, you know, what are we doing as a city and how is it being affected? So as we do some of those things, we'll get a baseline of where we're at and where we're going. And we'll be able to address those areas, see what's effective and what's not.
Makes sense. Do you believe that these changes will require, you know, additional resources for enforcement?
So currently we, we went from, uh, one solid waste inspector up to five now. So with the five solid waste investigators, uh, working on this, I anticipate at the very beginning when this goes into effect, as residents see that there's a change coming and we're going to get it and we're actually doing something, you know, constructive about this, we're going to see a great increase in the number of complaints coming in. We're going to see an increase in enforcement. It's going to peak up and then it'll take us a little time to catch up. Uh, not knowing how much violations we have, I, I couldn't say that we wouldn't. But the, the number of the five solid waste investigators that we have, given these tools, feel like they can keep those neighborhoods in much better condition. I'll know more in a year from now, once we go through the court system, see where we're at and, and see what type of violations. And we also, we, we feel that there are several bad actors in each of these neighborhoods that are doing a lot of this. And once we catch them and stop that, then we think the number of, uh, occurrences will be reduced.
Yeah, makes sense. I see that Council President Harden had to run, um, onto another meeting. So that's basically all the questions that I have right now. We did receive nine pieces of written, uh, testimony that have been shared with your office and certainly will, uh, work to get, uh, back to them, uh, before our meeting on Monday. And, but we do have one speaker this evening, um, or I guess this is afternoon still. So, uh, that speaker is Laura Fay with Flo. Um, Laura, are you available?
I am, thank you.
All right. So you have three minutes if you just introduce yourself and the organization you represent and look forward to your testimony.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Laura Fay and I'm with the Friends of the Lower Olentangie Watershed. And we would like to support this clarif- clarification to Title 13. Uh, we think it's going to be invaluable to reduce litter throughout Columbus and make people's responsibilities clear, uh, so that we can all be proud of the way the city looks. And also, uh, Flo's main concern is having healthy streams. A lot of this trash ends up blowing in or through, uh, storm sewers down to the Olentangie. So we're looking forward to this. And we'd like to thank you for all your work to make this happen. It seemed like it went pretty quickly from the first kickoff meeting that we attended. Uh, we do have one question and this is based on our observation of the three hundred gallon containers in alleys. Um, and that is how will this address the, um, residents who don't bag trash, especially in low income areas? Maybe they can't afford trash bags? So that's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I, I know, um, I'll have, uh, Tim speak to this as well. Uh, this is something that, uh, we've done a pilot. We actually just discussed this recently to try to do another, uh, pilot where we potentially hand out trash bags with, um, like through the Mid Ohio Food Bank or some organization like that that might, um, be regularly with, you know, handing food to those clients to see whether or not giving them bags would also, um, produce the results of eliminating litter and, and the, um, the problems with not bagging trash. So, um, uh, Tim, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, council member, as you mentioned, we just recently spoke about this. And, uh, just over a year ago, you, uh, yourself and council member, uh, Council President Harden and some other council members, we, we went door to door and handed out trash bags in a neighborhood in the, on the west side there where we knew we had a lot of loose debris in the three hundred gallons where we had unbagged trash. And the problem with unbagged trash is, is it goes into the three hundred if you dump your can in there. But when our truck comes by and we pick it up to dump it into the truck, if it's loose and the wind's blowing that day, stuff blows out of it and it's too much for our driver to get out. It's, you know, little pieces of paper going everywhere. So it's un, it's unmanageable for us on, uh, to, to pick all that up as well. And as, uh, Fay had mentioned, that goes down storm sewers, ends up in rivers and, you know, it's continual problem. So we do require trash to be bagged. And in those neighborhoods where we passed out, we did see a successful, uh, in, increase in the number of people bagging the trash and we saw a reduction in litter in those alleys. So we are looking at measures as to how do we get, one, trash bags? And how do we then get trash bags into the hands of the folks that need it the most? And to reduce our, um, littering that's occurring as a result of our collection of those unbagged materials. So we're working on that. Uh, Councilmember Remi, as you know, uh, will be working with you trying to get the, to continue that and seeing if we can get a long-term relationship built, uh, with an organization to, uh, make that happen.
That's great. Um, let's talk a little bit about, since, just take another moment to talk a little bit about like broken lids and, uh, if people, whether it be a three hundred that's sitting back there. Talk about the procedure, reporting that, kind of the timeframe in, in which that we should, uh, citizens should re- expect that to be repaired. And similarly, if my ninety gallons broken in some ways, what's that procedure, uh, to get that repaired or, or replaced?
Sure, so if, if you, if you own a ninety gallon or sixty-four gallon recycling container, if you report that through three one one, let us know what, what is broken. Is it the lid? Is it the wheels? What, or is it the tipper bar? You know, the more specific you can, you can get. Uh, we would repair that on your next collection day, uh, after we get the report. Because obviously a ninety gallon is up at your house. So we're not going to go up onto your property or up into your garage to get it. So we wait until collection day to repair nineties because they'll be out in the public right of way. We send a crew by, they dump it, they fix it, put a new wheel on it, do whatever. So they would report that through three one one, uh, if you have any of that damage. So if specific of information as you can get, uh, helps our crews proper, make sure they bring in the right, you know, uh, materials out to replace that. If you can give us the serial number off of the can, every can's got a serial number. It'll see like T I. or T P. and a bunch of serial numbers, numbers after it. If you can supply us that, that's even better. Because if you call in and supply that number to us, our, we can look up the, see exactly what manufacturer it was, what year it is. And we can determine exactly what wheel and everything because we have different containers and different manufacturers out there. And when we have replacement parts, parts, it takes, uh, the specific type to come in to fix that. So if we have your serial number or your address and we can reverse look it up, uh, those are all helpful. We typically get that on your very next collection day, uh, on those. Three hundred gallon containers, those are when they're reported, same way you'd report it through three, uh, the three one one and you report what it is and it, those also have serial numbers on them. So if you provide us that, we can know exactly what type it is and where. Uh, the challenge with the three hundred gallons is, is that a lot of people, they don't take ownership of them because they're not specifically assigned to one address. Usually three or four different residents will use that. So we rely on the residents if they can. Drivers, as they drive down through there, if they notice damage, they record it and we'll put it on the log to, to replace it. Three hundred gallon containers are typically, depending on the severity of it, uh, typically replaced in two to three weeks. Uh, depending on whether or not, one, can we dump it? If it's completely broke, we have to wait till a truck goes by, pick the whole can up. Because the repair crews can't dump a can, they're going out there to put wheels on it. So if it's fully loaded, we have to send one truck by to dump it, then they would repair it. If it's completely trashed and we would have to throw it in the, the truck and come, you know, with lids because they have lids, but also that they actually keep them shut, uh, when they're not placing the trash right into it.
Makes sense. Anything else you'd like to add this evening?
Uh, no, I really just wanted to thank you, uh, council member for, for, uh, the leadership on this and getting us to this point. Because as, as you heard, this is something we hear everywhere we go. Everywhere I go, I hear about these issues that we need to address it. And I feel that this, uh, this Title 13 change addresses those issues and will give us a, a great tool to, uh, really start cleaning up neighborhoods.
I want to thank you and your team for the amount of work that you put into this. I know that this has been a work in progress for a couple of years really, um, to get, you know, things situated to the point where we feel we can effectively manage, um, the litter issues and the illegal dumping issues and, and hopefully bring, um, some changes to the neighborhoods along with, you know, what, what's been going on with the roving trash trucks. And so it's kind of a, it's a combination of efforts to try to curb this problem. And we're not done. You know, we have more to do. And so we will continue to work on these things, listen to our community and making sure that, um, they know that we are supportive. And we certainly appreciate all those people out there that, um, spend their time cleaning the alleys. They shouldn't have to do what they do. But, um, the more people that take responsibility and, and properly, uh, dispose of their trash, the better off we all will be. Before we bring this hearing to a close, I'd like to thank the community for their engagement and feedback. I also want to remind everyone that ordinance number seventeen seventeen twenty twenty, the legislation for the proposed changes to Title 13 was on the Columbus City Council Agenda last night for first reading. It will reappear on the council agenda once more next Monday, July twenty-seventh for final consideration. I want to thank Representative Tim Swager, Randy Borntrager and the Department of Public Service for your hard work to prepare these much needed updates to bring before council. I'd also like to thank Angela Burks, James Schubach and our C T V team for assisting with our technology needs and connecting us with the community. I want to acknowledge and show my appreciation to my council colleagues and those that joined us this evening, especially Council President Harden. Lastly, I would like to thank Nia Walter and Matt Erickson with the Office of Legislative Research and of course my team, Jeff, Jeffrey Carter and Lucy Frank for their efforts in preparing us for this he- hearing. That's, this concludes this hearing on Title 13 changes. Have a great afternoon, everyone.